Good evening, everyone. We called our meeting into order during our executive session so we can begin our public meeting. Graylin is traveling for work, so you have me for the evening. So we're going to jump right into the agenda with the special public hearing on the 2024-2025 Annual District Report of Violence, Vandalism, and Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying, also known as a student safety report. But just before we start that, I just wanted to say one thing. I just wanted to congratulate Dr. Aderhold on receiving the NJASCD's 2025 Dr. Ernest L. Boyer Award for Outstanding Educator of the Year. He received it last week. Dr. Aderhold does so much for our community, goes above and beyond, and so a very well-deserved award.[65.36][65.36](APPLAUSE). And with that, Ms. Jessica Sincaida.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for giving me a little time this evening. The first thing I want to emphasize is that this is our report for the 2024-2025 school year. This is a report that's done annually, typically in the fall, as the previous year concludes. And some of the data that I will also provide this evening is from the 2023-2024 school year, just so you have a baseline to compare some numbers. So the Student Safety Data System collects two types of information for all schools throughout New Jersey. And fortunately, here in West Windsor Plainsboro, we do not see most of these types of offenses that are on the screen listed there. But we do live in a world where things happen, probably more often than most of us wish. And so we do have processes and procedures in place if and when incidents do happen. So with the reporting, we not only report the number of incidents, but we also report, which is a reactionary number, right? But we also report our HIB trainings and our programs, which we think proactive programming in order to think about making good, positive choices for our students. So I'll go through both of those tonight, giving you the data first of our reported incidences, as well as then a lot of our proactive programming. So the next slide that I'm going to put up is actually the 2023-2024 data, and I'm going to go through each category so that I can explain a little bit and you can really understand what we're looking at. So along the top, you have the way we need to report our information. And in the column on the left, you have how it's divided on grade level bands. So when we think about violence, we think about typically some type of altercation between any number of students. When we think about vandalism, this could be something such as graffiti or damage to a school or district property. Substance is the use of drugs or alcohol. And then we have confirmed HIB. So I know in the summer, Dr. Jessica Smedley did a report on all of our HIB findings. This is just our confirmed HIBs, okay? So that's something to keep in mind and a little different between this report and the report that you had in July. I want to also note that this number, which is, again, two school years ago, the 2023-2024 report, when Dr. McDonald gave this report last year, he noted that during the 2023-2024 school year is when the state allowed us to do preliminary determination with the law on harassment, intimidation, and bullying, which allowed our anti-bullying specialists and our administrators to determine if this was a conflict rather than HIB, right? And that changes the conversation that we have with students. It changes the conversation around harassment, intimidation, and bullying. And therefore, we found that our students and our families were much more thoughtful about the actual conflict and the language that was used. And so you're going to see, when I show the 2024-2025 school year data, that that, again, is part of the reflection of that number that's going to drop again. So this is our baseline. And then when we look at the 2024-2025 school year data, if we go straight to that HIB column, we're at 62 confirmed HIBs, right? The previous slide had 103. Two factors that I would like to highlight. One is the continued preliminary determination and targeted language around what is harassment, intimidation, and bullying? What are those three prongs? We can talk about that with students. We can talk about that with families. But also, in our K5 category there, that dropped significantly as well. And we know that we have been explicit with our SEL curriculum and conversations that we've been having in our elementary schools. And so, of course, you know, we'll see how this trends year after year, but we would like to note that we're doing some intentional work in our elementary schools around that. Not to say that we're not in our middle schools and high schools, but we have piloted some programs. And so we're seeing some good conversations and good results come out of that. As well, overall, when I went back and looked at not only last year's, but the previous several years, all of the numbers in most of the categories fluctuate. Now, HIB has had some dramatic changes, but the others fluctuate anywhere from three to five, you know, maybe a little more, depending on the year. We're pretty consistent. Substance use has, again, dropped, which we're happy to see, and we're doing some, you know, continued proactive work with our students' assistance counselors, specifically in middle schools and high schools. But when we think about why sometimes vandalism might go up a little bit higher, or why violence might be a couple digits higher, I ask you to think about social media, possibly, right? And what a lot of our teens might call challenges that could be put out there that are not meant to be hurtful or cause intentional harm, but instead maybe thought to be funny. But when students do then accept and, you know, try to follow what's happening on social media, the consequences to that come with, or those actions come with consequences that we do have to address. We had put something out as a school district earlier this year about that, making parents aware, if they weren't, about any of the social media, whether it be a TikTok challenge or an Instagram challenge, or others that younger students might know about, that people our age might not. But we try to stay ahead of that. And again, the programs and the positive proactive actions that we're taking in our lower levels, we're hoping to see then the better decision-making coming when they get to the middle school, maybe start to be inundated with that social media in the middle school and high school years, that they'll begin to think about those choices rather than the reactionary, "In the moment, I can do that." But instead, that comes with consequences for myself and for others. And I know better, and I'll help others to do better as well. So those were a few of the numbers that we have to report. But if you remember, I also said that we have to report our trainings and what programs we're running. So a few things. HIB trainings and programs. Our school counselors and our students' assistance counselors go into and do classroom lessons at all grade levels, targeted. They could be, you know, large-scale or very targeted, depending on what we need or what programs they're using. We have school safety and climate teams, and they create initiatives within each building. I'll talk about those teams specifically a little bit later. But those involve our anti-bullying specialists as well, and those can have very targeted programs in each school. For the past several years, we've been having full-school climate summits that we have met here the past several years. All 10 schools are represented with students, faculty, administrative, counseling, and parent voices in the room, looking at HIB data, their own schools, but also looking at as a collective, as the district, what are we doing, looking to make connections and correlations between schools. We have presented at our Parent Teacher Association engagements, whether they be monthly meetings here. I know that Dr. Smedley, our Director of Counseling, has pushed into some PTA meetings as well this year to talk about the counseling program, specifically at the elementary level. A lot of times, they're more hands-on at the high school, middle school and high school level, when we think, of course, selection and things like that. But what do our counselors do at those younger grades? And just to remind everyone that we are trained administratively, and our anti-bullying specialists are trained yearly in the month of September. On HIB law, HIB process changes to that, and our procedures along with that. Also, there's external professional development. I know there's an upcoming Strauss Esme, which is the company we use for all of our policies within the district. They're also offering some professional development that our anti-bullying specialists can take part in. So along with HIB come two very specific weeks that the state of New Jersey needs to recognize. And although it says "week of respect," the state of New Jersey might think it's only a week. Here in West Windsor Plainsboro, we like to think of it that it's a full year of respect, but a targeted week that the rest of the year builds on. And so some examples of how this plays out in schools, and if you have children in your schools, you may have heard some of them talk about it earlier this month, would be some school-wide themes. I know one of our schools had, our school is a family, and all of their activities were created and directed toward that theme. One of our middle schools had a hashtag of "blue up" because blue is the color that represents a week of respect. It could have everything from a wall of fame to a "respect quote of the day." And so very focused conversations, push-in, whole school, but it's a week dedicated to building respect, classroom, and school culture. The second week that the state of New Jersey requires is School Violence Awareness Week. And this actually happened this past week. It's the third week in October. So if we think of "week of respect" being earlier in the month, building your classroom, building your school, this is going to be building outward into your community, okay? And connections that we have within the community. So some examples of what our schools did this past week. Conflict resolution lessons within morning meetings. There could be school-wide challenges, right? Not the same as a TikTok or social media challenge, but instead of a challenge of finding a positive, passing along a positive message to a friend, right? Passing along a positive message to a teacher or a counselor that week, but really promoting, notice something that someone did that was nice for their friend. And so challenges in that way to go out of their way to begin to notice the positives within our schools. All of this is centered in self-awareness, self-management, because that's going to be part of that whole conflict resolution, right? Part of that is understanding who I am and how I respond to what I'm being met with. And so while we talk about conflict resolution in those morning meetings or during a mediation, it's also reflecting on how am I responding during this and better understanding what my role in this conflict is. And with this, of course, we're continuing our partnerships with our law enforcement officers, which I'll touch on in a moment. So our school and safety climate teams, I mentioned those in the beginning as being part of the HIB process. So all of our schools have a school and safety and climate team. That's a requirement. And when we come together in that summit, right? That's one time of year where we can all sit in the same room together. We share what is working. We share also where we need help within our schools. And some of the topics that come up and what the purpose of those teams are is to create healthy and safe schools, right? We need kids to know that they are seen, valued, and we're working to create a sense of belonging in all of our schools. Remember, on these teams, we have kids, we have teachers, we have staff, counselors, because our anti-bullying specialist is there, and administrators. And then we have parents as well, so that we really have all the stakeholders at the table. This is heavy on our social-emotional learning and our goal work that we know is at the heart of what the district does. We have culturally responsive classrooms and our staff who are trained in that. In the past, we did training specifically last year for the nurtured heart approach. We also talked to parents about that and did Parent University about nurtured heart approach. We have other opportunities for parents this year that I can share if you're interested. We're also using Second Step in our elementary schools. And actually, one of our elementary schools is piloting that in a more in-depth, focused way to see where we can take it in the future. Wayfinder is a curriculum that we're going to be using with our secondary schools as well. And so we'll use these teams to evaluate, you know, the effectiveness and how students are reacting to and engaging with all of these. And we have policies on HIB. This is why I'm up here presenting on this tonight. That's a requirement of the state. We have our code of conduct listed here. And when all of this comes together, restorative practices are in place. Because when incidents happen, the job of the school is to work with the student and with the families to create a connection so that that student can re-enter our buildings feeling cared for, seen, and valued, and know that they're not judged for one decision that they made, but instead can move forward from a decision that they made and know that it's okay. You know, we stumble, and we get back up, and we have support to move forward. And so our restorative practices are a part of that. And finally, just to highlight some large-scale safety and security pieces. I won't read all of these to you, but I just want to highlight a few. We do continue to have Class 3 police officers in all of our buildings. We have, as you all approved last month at the board meeting, a memorandum of agreement with our police department, both police departments, West Windsor and Plainsboro. So we have positive working relationships there. We continue to practice drills, two drills every month that we're required to do. And then through that, we have a reflective practice with our administrative teams, our security teams, to, you know, see how always we can continue to improve when that happens. We have our mental health clinicians in our partnership with Rutgers Behavioral Healthcare in all of our, or in our buildings, and they can service all of our students. The next one, our key players, our school counselors, our students' assistance counselors, our child study team, and our school nurses are the core. They're really the core of knowing our kids and creating safe spaces for our kids. Parent universities, we're going to continue. We've been having those. We targeted some of our middle school and our sixth-grade families in the spring and in the summer, and we'll continue to offer parent universities on lots of topics, some of those being very specific. How do you talk to your teens? I know, as a building administrator for several years, I got, "My kid doesn't talk to me." And so we have to talk about, because they'll talk to us at school, even if they don't talk to you at home. And so we're sharing some of those tips and tricks that we use in the school. And two pieces that I want to highlight. We've been using Gaggle, the Gaggle software, as a filtering system for our Google platforms that all of our students, well, any student who has a Google account. We have now enhanced that. Now that AI is enhancing how we all are using technology, we wanted to make sure that our students, if they're on their school device or in their school account, that we're able to monitor that in order to provide whatever supports. And so we have enhanced what Gaggle does for us. We don't wait for a student to send an email or share a doc any longer. We're monitoring in-time keystrokes so that we can provide support as quickly and as often as necessary. And last is Safe New Jersey, which will be introduced in the coming months, whole scale to the community. But it's going to be a platform that, again, provides a place for students to report concerns, if they have concerns about themselves or about others. It started in the realm of HIB for anonymous reporting of potential bullying situations, but it's been built out since then to now connect to mental health supports outside of the school, outside of the school facility, and outside of the school day. So more to come on that in November. And I finish up with our mission statement because that's why we do what we do, right? To empower our learners and to empower our learners to make good choices and to know that they are resilient when a choice is made and a consequence happens, that they can come back here and be supported in moving forward. So I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions from the board? Liz?
Thank you so much, Ms. Sincaida, for your presentation. You know, there's been a lot of concerns expressed in the community about mental health concerns and behavioral concerns and all of that. I think it was very helpful to hear this here tonight about all the different ways that the school district is taking a comprehensive approach. You mentioned the use of parent universities and as a means to have some outreach to parents. Can you speak a little bit more about that?
Sure. So Dr. Smedley led some, just so you know, I want to talk about what happened in the past, which was new this year. So in August, they provided, it was our in-house clinician and Ms. Karen Abrams, who's a supervisor for special services in our middle level, as well as Dr. Smedley, who's our Director of Counseling. They provided multiple sessions catering to our incoming sixth-grade parents to help that transition into middle school. So topics such as Trailhead Talk, Erasing the Worries Before the Climb. They have a theme of like hiking up a mountain, heading to middle school. And then another one called Packing the Right Tools: Building Study and Executive Functioning Skills, because we're moving from that, like, one classroom in elementary school to teams in multiple classrooms of middle school. And so then a couple others about navigating the terrain, social skills, and changing friendships. So lots of school parts, but also social aspects. So that's something we're looking to continue into next summer. But a couple of upcoming ones, we recently had a Parent University on artificial intelligence, right? And it was a lunch-and-learn. So those are all listed on our website as well, because even if you think AI isn't about the social-emotional side, we do talk about that, because you can't separate school and academics out from the social-emotional learning part. And so all of our parent universities will touch on that as well. And so Dr. Smedley is continuing her Parent University series also.
Thank you. Dana?
Thank you for your comprehensive report. I had a couple of questions. Can you give examples of the approach, like nurtured heart, Second Step, and Wayfinder? What are examples of like how that is integrated in the curriculum? What does that look like? Thank you.
So nurtured, well, nurtured heart came from a philosophy of de-escalation, and so steps and practice in de-escalation. I'm just going to give a large overview. So Second Step works on empathy, emotional regulation, and responsible decision-making. And think that could happen in a morning meeting, right? Targeted lessons that not only the counselor might push in for, but then we're also piloting where teachers can turnkey those lessons also, okay? And then Wayfinder, although all could be a K-12 comprehensive, when I know Sue Tataro, our Chief Equity Officer, worked with Dr. Jessica Smedley, our Director of Counseling, and our SEL administrative team to kind of vet all of these. Wayfinder is a toolkit designed to help kids develop their SEL skills, but like future-ready skills. And so that was found to be more helpful with our middle school to high school-age students with specific lessons. Now, in a high school, you're like, how do they push in? It could be groups, right? That they might come out of, I'm not going to say out of class, but out of a study hall period, they might meet at lunch, have some type of an initial assessment taken, benchmark to see where, what different needs students might have, and then we could group and target skills, whether they be specific social-emotional skills or that thinking future-ready self-regulation, communicative, things like that.
Loy?
Thank you so much for the presentation. Just a comment, and I remember last year, listening to the 2023-2024 numbers, I'm so glad to see them go down, and especially in the K5, because I was always curious why it was so high. And I know there was comments about kids coming back from COVID and readjusting, behavioral issues and things like that. But dropping down to nine, that's a really great number. And I think what you said about the preliminary determination, that's probably helped quite a bit. I was just curious, because you had mentioned that there are some programs that were being piloted to sort of in that K5 group, if you could talk a little bit about like what some of those programs were.
So that's Second Step. Yep. So very targeted conversations, and I think self-regulation is going to be a big part of that, as that was a conversation returning from COVID, I think for all of us, kid or adult. That's an ongoing learning and self-reflective aspect of growth, right?
Got it. Yep, thank you so much. I thought there was...
Any more questions from the board?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Now, we're going to have a special opportunity for public comment on the 2024-2025 Student Safety Report. The board invites thoughts and reactions on the Annual District Report of Violence, Vandalism, and Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying from members of our community who are present. Each participant is asked to give his or her name and address prior to making a statement, which will be limited to three minutes, in accordance with Board Policy 0167. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. This public comment period shall be limited to 15 minutes. Do we have any public comment on this special public hearing? Seeing none, I'll close that public comment session, and I will move to ask for a motion to approve the, sorry, to accept the 2024-2025 Annual District Report of Violence, Vandalism, and Harassment, Intimidation, Bullying, also known as a student safety report, as required by the New Jersey State Department of Education, NJSA 18A17-46, and NJAC 6A16-5.3F. Do I have anybody for that motion? Liz and Loy?
Okay. Okay, we'll start with Ms. Jen Aaron.
Yes.
Ms. Hope.
Yes.
Ms. Krug.
Yes.
Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Chetty.
Yes.
And Ms. Bonsell.
Yes.
I got everybody.
Motion passes, and that adjourns the special public hearing on the 2024-2025 Student Safety Report. And now we'll move on to Dr. Aderhold.
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of comments tonight on a multitude of topics, actually. First, as the Board of Education had the opportunity to attend New Jersey School Boards Association last week and the training program, now that it's official, I want to just recognize Dana Krug one more time as New Jersey's Board Member of the Year for 2025-2026. Congratulations again, Dana.[1791.11][1791.11](APPLAUSE). Something that is unique and has never happened before, we had one of our district staff members... Something that is unique and has never happened before, we had one of our district staff members currently serving as Miss New Jersey. She just participated in the Miss USA competition and was the first runner-up for Miss USA, so congratulations to Ivy Harrington. Wanted to just also talk about something a little bit more serious with respect to things happening in the state of the world and the state of the United States with respect to the federal shutdown. There's been questions raised regarding what does that mean for students and families that may qualify for free and reduced lunch, may qualify through federal programs such as SNAP or TAMP. So just for that, it's the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, is SNAP. That's a direct certification program through the federal government. We have over 300 students that receive direct services, 305 students to be exact, that receive services, food, through SNAP, which is a direct certification program. We also have students and families that receive assistance through TANF, which is the Temporary Assistance Needy Families Program. And then when you add in programs through Medicaid, which is in the process of being gutted over the next 10 years, thanks to the One Big Beautiful Bill, fosters runaways, homeless, migrant, and then income-based, we have 951 students in WWP that receive some form of assistance with respect for food, breakfast, lunch. And thanks to programs such as Send Hunger Packing, we have families that are participating in bridge meal programs, which means that Send Hunger Packing works with local food banks to do a backpack program, sending meals home for weekends. So the bridge is the weekend. And the question that's been raised is if SNAP funding is not coming forward as a result of the federal shutdown, as we've indicated through the U.S. Department of Agriculture, will not be sending funding, that does not mean that students will not eat in WWP. So I want to just make it very clear to those watching, those that may hear this, that the district will be making sure that students that have qualified for free and reduced lunch, whether through the federal or the state program, will be receiving their meals without interruption. But the funding that then reimburses may not come or may come very late, but that is not important compared to making sure our students eat. So that will continue. Now, with respect to, with respect to the what-can-we-do question, there's families that have reached out. We received two emails today from, just heartwarming emails that just said like, we want to help. How do we help? I would say that in the absence of the opportunity to directly support a neighbor, there are food pantries throughout our communities. There's the West Windsor Little Free Pantry, and with the Art Center, there's the Plainsboro Pantry. The faith-based communities, majority of them have some form of food pantry. There's county-based food pantries. And then there's Send Hunger Packing. And Send Hunger Packing has just been remarkable and steadfast in supporting the district over these last, well, it's eight or 10 years now. So just want to thank Send Hunger Packing, but just recognize that if folks like the scouts that are here in the audience or community members are looking for something to do, we can provide direct support to our local food pantries. And just because we're feeding the students during the school day, it's important to know that the food stamps that families may receive are not, may not come, right? So getting food during the day does not mean the family will receive the benefits that they deserve and qualify for to help their family food bills. So more now than ever, the food pantries are going to see need. So again, I would just encourage our community to consider that. Focusing on another topic, just because it came in yesterday, but the district received something called an Energy Score Card. And, you know, as you may know, the Finance Committee and Dr. Russo have done steadfast work with respect to the Energy Savings Improvement Program, working to decrease our energy footprint. When we first went through the referendum and went through the ESIP-1, and now we've entered into ESIP-2, it's, ESIP stands again for Energy Savings Improvement Program, we were not, we did not have a very favorable rating as a district. But now we just received our new scorecard. We now have, from an energy efficiency scorecard, we now have moved to the number-one district in Mercer County, out of the nine regular operating districts. And in the state of New Jersey, out of the 569 districts that receive ratings, we've moved all the way up to number 22. Five of our buildings are energy-neutral due to our solar program, and our score went from a 59 last year to a 96% energy efficiency this year. That's because most of those solar projects were done towards, and came online towards the completion of the referendum, and the ESIP followed some of the building construction that was done in the referendum. So as programs came online, and the rebates and the energy savings follow almost two years behind or a year behind the way the rankings work, or the way the agency works, again, we had a 40% reduction year over year. That's really important when we talk about long-term fiscal forecasting, because as the energy savings may seem significant, we also added a tremendous amount of footprint. So we're able to basically maintain our budget, essentially budget-neutral as we've added footprint, but we've been able to decrease energy. So we've almost become, it's almost become net-neutral. So again, we are, we were prepared to put additional roof solar on three additional properties, but due to the solar grid being at capacity, we were not able to proceed at this time. So we have taken some preliminary steps, even looking at additional options for the roof at Town Center, Grover, and here at Village. So we have more energy opportunities in the future that we will consider, but we will be, you will see staged construction, five of our parking lots for solar parking lots starting in the spring. And Dr. Russo's been navigating all that effort, so just congratulations to him and his team regarding that. Jessica mentioned it, but I just want to mention specifically that the AI panel that was facilitated last week by Sue Tataro was phenomenal. Sue was the moderator, facilitator, coordinator of all things. She worked with several other building administrators, building and district administrators. But when you talk about parent universities on a topic, we had over 160 parents come out for a lunch and learn on a Friday afternoon in October to hear about the district's philosophy and thinking on artificial intelligence. And it just was a remarkable program, so congratulations to Sue. We also had 55 comments throughout that the panel was able to address, majority of them in live time, and then we'll be building responses and thinking of follow-up programs well, but just really well done. And then just for a plug for something to read if the community hasn't, I had an op-ed in NJ Spotlight last week with respect to the state of fiscal funding in New Jersey. And just want to note a couple things that are very concerning, that we need to be very mindful of, not just as a school community, but as a state educational community. When you start thinking of the fiscal challenges that the state is facing, New Jersey has a $2.1 billion structural deficit. We have a governor's election. We have changes in Medicaid that's going to peel off $1 trillion across states over the next 10 years, which is going to be approximately $3 billion to the healthcare industry in '26, '27 for New Jersey's hospitals and medical institutions. When that hits, we're already seeing exorbitant costs. The state health benefit plan for educators went up over 30%. For the municipalities, it went up over 35%. And so when you start talking about cap budgets, and you start talking about impact to local taxpayers, 2% in allowances does not cover any of that. So, you know, the district is really watching the challenges to healthcare, what could happen with Medicaid. And when you start thinking of state budgeting, when you start talking about impacts to Medicaid, New Jersey is going to have to make a decision about what kind of programs they continue to cover. So what does Medicaid cover? Medicaid covers programs such as family assistance or NJ family care, right? So children's healthcare that are, get covered that do not have healthcare through their, through an employer of their parents or guardians. 40% of all births in the United States are covered by Medicaid. We have senior living, individuals that are, that their funds run out and they are in nursing homes, get covered through Medicaid. Mental health services in the state get covered through Medicaid. Some of the wraparound services for families in need get covered through Medicaid. So Medicaid's a big deal for a lot of different things that we don't really know. And in the One Big Beautiful Bill, there's other things that are out there, like there's caps on the amount of money that students can take for loans, for undergraduate and graduate school. There's changes to how graduate-plus loans can be done. There's changes to energy improvement and energy savings, essentially a defunding. The strategy essentially is defund agenda items that would have been funded through Congress by one particular party, so the bill itself doesn't go away, so clean energy doesn't go away, just the money to support clean energy goes away. And what we've also done then is we're shifting the balance sheet from the federal government to the state. So if you want to clear your debt, put it on someone else's back. So the debt or the responsibility for Medicaid will fall essentially to states to make state-based decisions. That's a really big deal, because education is one of the biggest players, if not the biggest player in the state budget. So when you think about education as the biggest player, it will inevitably be impacted. The question we don't know yet is how much, how fast, and which budget cycle? Will it be for the '26, '27, or will it come onboard more for the '27, '28? But no matter what, it's coming, because the One Big Beautiful Bill was signed on the Fourth of July, on July 4th, 2025, and that goes into effect over a 10-year phase out of $930 trillion, a billion dollars, so just under a trillion. And that is in law. So stay tuned for that. That is something that people need to be very mindful of, whether it's at municipal government, whether it's at district government, school districts. So elections matter, and hopefully everyone goes and votes in the first week in November.
Thank you, Dr. Adalhold. And now we will move on to Dr. Gould and Dr. Pearson for the district's testing report.
Good evening, board members and members of the community and our students. Dr. Pearson and I will be sharing with you tonight the district testing presentation, the annual presentation, to share with you a report of all of our testing data for the district from 2024 to 2025. For tonight's agenda, we'll first review the overall demographic data for our district, the overview of our high school graduation pathways and proficiencies, as well as our New Jersey graduation performance assessment data for NJGPA. Then Dr. Pearson will talk about our New Jersey Student Learning Assessment Data, or NJSLA results. We'll specifically focus on English Language Arts, Mathematics, and then Science. Next, we'll take you through the data for Dynamic Learning Map and our access testing, as well as our AP data, or Advanced Placement, our ACT, SAT, and our SAT data. So lots of information for you to think about and consider this evening. And then, most importantly, we also want to talk about some of the strategies that we utilize as a district to help support all of our learners and their growth. And at the very end, we will do a little bit of celebrating and highlight some of our strengths, as well as the district, and showcase some of the great things that our students are doing. So to start off, we'd like to share a little bit about our demographic data. So here you can take a look at our overall student population by race and ethnicity. I do want to highlight the fact that this information is based off of the October 15 submission to the state. So every October 15, we have to submit to the state data around our student race and ethnicity categories. These are federally set categories, so we report out exactly what they ask us for, and so these are the categories in terms of race and ethnicity, based on last year, 2024-25 demographic data for race and ethnicity. The next piece of demographic data that I'd like to share out is our group of students by program. So again, this takes us through our students on, the population of students on free and reduced lunch, students receiving support through Section 504, which is based off of our Disabilities Act, as well as students receiving support for our multilingual learners, or formerly known as ELL or ESL, and then our students receiving support through special education, special programming, our students with disabilities. And these are percentages of our population receiving support through those programs. And then lastly, we are also required to report out our demographic data by gender categories, and here we have our population based off of the October 15 submission. Now we will move into the first category of assessments that we will review, which is our graduation pathways. In the state of New Jersey, all students are required to take the New Jersey Graduation Performance Assessment in order to be eligible for graduation. In English Language Arts as well as Mathematics, they must receive a score of 725 or greater in order to be eligible for graduation in both Mathematics and English Language Arts. There are other pathways, so if a student does not meet that criteria, several things can happen. The first pathway is that they have an opportunity to retake the assessment in the fall, so they take it in the spring of their junior year. And then if they're, if they do not meet that, they can take it again in the fall of their senior year. Another pathway would be that they would be able to meet proficiency through an SAT or an ACT, or we also use another assessment called Accuplacer. We've actually had a really great success utilizing Accuplacer as one of our pathways for our students in WWP who have not met the graduation proficiency through GPA or the assessment. And also, the other thing, if they are not able through any of those possible pathways, they can also submit a student portfolio, and they can go through an appeal process to the New Jersey Department of Education. So now we'll take a look at some of our data around NJGPA or the New Jersey Proficiency Assessment. As I mentioned, students are, there are really only two categories. You are either ready to graduate, and you have met proficiency scoring 725 or greater, or you are not yet ready to graduate, and then we explore those other pathways. Here are district percentages for both English Language Arts as well as Mathematics in comparison to the state. As you can see, WWP outperforms the state in both English Language Arts as well as Mathematics, with 97% of our students in English Language Arts meeting proficiency, and about 89% of our students in Mathematics meeting proficiency. And here on this slide, you can see the same information as represented before, but as a visual representation, and in comparison to the state. On this slide, you could see graduation readiness in both English Language and English Language Arts, as well as Mathematics for the last three years, so '23, '24, and '25. So I will note, and you may also notice, you know, in English Language Arts, it looks as though we've pretty much remained consistent in our graduation readiness and our pathway. And in math, it looks like for the years '24, '23, '24, we were pretty consistent, and then in '25, we had a slight dip. So that's something that we are keeping a watch. It's important to note, though, that, you know, when we're looking at these assessments and we're comparing year to year, there could be cohort variability, meaning two different groups of students are taking the assessment. It is something that we will take a look at, though, and we will keep, continue to monitor and make sure that, you know, it isn't a pattern, because if it does become something that's a pattern, then we need to take a look at our curriculum, we need to look at our instruction and see, is the curriculum aligned with the state standards? Are there adjustments that we need to make in order to ensure that our students are prepared? The math specifically is based off of Algebra I content, as well as geometry, so those So those are two courses that we very specifically monitor in terms of their alignment to ensure that our students are prepared to take the assessment. On this slide, you can see our student performance by district demographic in terms of race and ethnicity, and their readiness for graduation. And here, the district demographic by program, in terms of readiness for graduation as well. And so when we're looking at these specifically by demographic groups, you know, some of the conversations that we have as an administrative team, and also our supervisor teams with our teachers, are things like thinking about, you know, reflecting on this data and looking at what are the areas of growth, and how do we help to ensure that all of our students are making meaningful growth, and that they are ready to graduate? Looking at our programs, looking at the levels of support. And Dr. Pearson, later on, will talk a lot about what programs and what specific supports we have for individual students, so that we can ensure that all of our students are making adequate growth. And now I will turn it over to Dr. Pearson, who will speak and share a lot of data with you about the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, which is NJSLA. And lots of our students take that, and so she will share some information with you about that.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to take a look at now, as Dr. Gould said, looking at our New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, which measures proficiency in English Language Arts, Math, and Science. We're first going to start with the English Language Arts portion of the assessment. This slide provides some detailed descriptions of the NJSLA Language Arts portion of the assessment. The NJSLA ELA assessment is administered to students in grades three through nine to measure student proficiency towards acquiring the skills of the New Jersey Student Learning Standards in English Language Arts. It emphasizes the importance of close reading, synthesizing ideas within and across text, determining meaning of words and phrases and context, and writing effectively when using or analyzing sources. The NJSLA ELA is measured on five different levels of proficiency, with levels four and five meeting expectations and exceeding expectations as passing. This holds true for both ELA and Mathematics. This slide has a lot of information on it, so we're going to spend some time looking at this slide here. This slide shows our ELA performance scores for students in grades three through nine for the last three years. The data shown represents information about the same grade level, and also different cohorts of students being tested. When we look across multiple years' performance data, it is difficult to compare progress directly because there are different cohorts of students that are being tested each year. It's like comparing three different sets of people's scores on the same assessment. As an administrative team, along with teachers, we look for trends and patterns, both across and within cohorts. If we take a look at the eighth grade line, for example, and we look across levels four and five, we see that there is a dip from 2023 to 2024, when looking at the combined scores of meets and exceeds expectations. As different teams take a look at, as administrative team and supervisor team along with teachers, we take a deeper look at this information to determine areas in our curriculum that need to be revised, and also provide where we need to do some professional development. We know that the ELA middle school curriculum was rewritten, and teachers have been receiving ongoing professional development, and we see that that dip rebounds in 2025, moving up to 87.3%, where students are meeting or exceeding the expectations. Another example is to look across the elementary and looking at where we've addressed significant changes in our literacy program at K-5. We continue to work through a multi-year plan to implement Orton-Gillingham methodology, which is a structured literacy method of teaching phonics, phonemic awareness, and morphology, which is the study of parts of words and their meanings, through IMSC training for all of our K-5 teachers and reading instruction. If you look at that third grade cohort, as they move through elementary school, it looks like there's a dip of 3% at fifth grade when you look across that fifth grade line. But if you look at the growth of the cohort, you see in 2023, 59.3% of students passed, and then as a cohort, they were passing rate of 65.7%. And then last year, that same cohort ended at 73.5%, which, when you look again across the fifth grade, it looks like there is a dip, but as a cohort, they've actually grown 14 points in the last three years. As we look then, we look at this information in different ways. This also isn't the only information that we look at. So this is just one test looked at in multiple different ways for us to be able to start thinking about what needs to change, if changes need to be made, and they're not made in isolation of just one test. On this slide, what we're looking at is the same grade across the last five administrations of the NJSLA assessment. 2018 was the first year that that assessment was moved from Park into NJSLA, and then we had a break because of COVID, and then we started again. And you can see, we haven't quite rebounded back from where we were pre-COVID, but we do see modest gains from there. Other ways that we look at the same data is looking at compared to the state with the district, and really what we want to look at is that Level Four, and Level Five is on the next slide, where we are, for the most part, above the state in each of those different places when we look across the different grades, or different grades in different years of, different grades and the different, looking at '25 and above. So here, we see this at Level Five and above here for the last three years. Again, for the most part, we are above the state averages on this, and this is where we, this is again, a passing, exceeding expectations. Just like we looked at with GPA, we then start to break it down by demographic information. And when we look at this first slide here, this slide shows disaggregated demographic information by race and ethnicity. In comparison, the state level of passing across levels four and five is 53%. The demographic data here demonstrates that overall, the district, our students are achieving at levels four and five greater than the state, but there is still work to be done in addressing different areas, and we do this through our strategic goal work. Another way to look at the same information is then looking at that across the last three years. And when we look at it across the last three years, we do see that there are modest gains across most of our demographic areas. And again, this comes back to the work of the strategic goals, particularly our equity work, in looking at and recognizing the importance of including all of our students, cultural references in all aspects of learning, including classroom experiences, making sure we're increasing access and challenging biases that contradict a belief in every student's capacity to achieve at high levels. It is a continued focus for the strategic goals, and it continues to be a need in our district to ensure that all learners reach their full potential. Another way that we look at this data is the same as Dr. Gould discussed when we're looking at GPA, is through programming. And when we look at this, the data suggests, again, that we have places that we need to improve upon, to increase our student achievement. And a little bit later, we'll talk more about what it is that we've done through different title funding to support growth and achievement in ELA. Again, looking at the information then across the last three years. When we look at it again by program the last three years, we see that we're making modest gains across most programming. The exception there, we can see, is with special ed, we see a slight decline in our special ed programming, which is something that we will look at and continue to look at as we look at these patterns and look at other data that we have. We also can look at this by gender, and we don't report information out when we have less than 10 students, so you'll only see females and males here in the listing. You could see that by, we have a passing rate of about 81% for females in ELA, and for males, it's 74%. And then when we look again, like, the last three years, we see that for females, it's holding steady at the 81% mark, and then we see modest gains for males after a slight dip in the previous administration. The next part of the NJSLA assessment is Mathematics. This is given to students in grades three through eight, along with students taking Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry. It assesses students' abilities in relation to counting, cardinality, operations, and algebraic thinking, numbers and operations in base 10, fractions, measurement in data, and geometry. Just like we said with ELA, this is also looked at across five levels of performance, with levels four and five being the passing rate. That's the meet expectations and exceeds expectations, just as we saw with the ELA section of the NJSLA. It's important to note here that, unlike ELA, that in middle school, we start to see various pathways for mathematical sequences, and this impacts the way the results are displayed. And we also should note that we have less restrictive pathways for students to take Algebra in middle school than other places. So you'll see that come up as we look at the data for Mathematics. So we're back to this big slide again, that we looked at, same as what we looked at for ELA. Again, we show math proficiency scores for students in grades three through eight, along with Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry. We see MS and HS delineating between middle school and high school on the Algebra I, Algebra II assessments. Again, when we look at this, it's important to note that a relatively small percentage of students take the Math 8 assessment. That's where you see the eight going across. We only have 86 students across both middle schools enrolled in Math 8, which is about 11% of our population of students in middle school taking Math 8. When we look at, trying to look at some of the trends and patterns in here, we have the same thing that we look at when we look at ELA, we look across and also down the cohort. And we can see that when we look at the third grade cohort, starting in 2023, we see that they had a passing rate of 65.2%, and then 66.3% the following year, to this past year of passing rate of about 71% in this past year. Additionally, when you look across that fourth grade cohort, we see an almost five-point gain from the previous year. Despite what's been reported in some publications this year, a plan has been in place to review performance data on the NJSLA. Teachers have received professional development. We have updated curricular resources. We have systems in place, even as this new test comes in, to be able to make sure students are prepared for the new test. And teachers have worked hard to have more students exposure to test questions, and we have done this in a way to not oversaturate with a focus on test prep, but rather on problem solving. As we move through, looking at this data, we're going to look at it again in the same ways that we've looked at it with the ELA data. Again, looking again from third through eight, and then we have the Algebra I listed here along against the other grades. Again, same thing, NJSLA pre-pandemic to after pandemic. We again see some growth coming back into that. This is unfortunately the last year for NJSLA comparison, because we do have a new test coming in, in the spring this year. So this was the end for the regular NJSLA test as we know it for this, with this administration. Again, when we look across at our levels four and level five, for the most part, with the exception of looking at that Math 8, we are at above the state levels. And in looking at this, along also, you'll see a dip too with the Algebra I high school. We have less students that also take that course, where the bulk of kids are taking Algebra I in middle school. And then we do the same thing when looking at the level fives. You see the same trend happening with the level five information, where we are, for the most part, above the state proficiency. Again, seventh and eighth grade students have a variety of pathways. Again, the eighth grade students, we only have about 11.4% of our students in Math 8. 35% of our seventh graders and 51% of our eighth graders are enrolled in the Algebra I class, with an additional 36% of our eighth graders are enrolled in Algebra II, which you see reflected in the way that these scores are presented. And then, same thing as we did with ELA, we look at this broken down by race and ethnicity with our different demographic groups. The state passing rate for Mathematics is about 41.4%. Again, it shows that we do have some work to do with our different demographic groups. And again, it all comes back to making sure with our strategic goals that we are making sure that students have access and rigor for all of our students. And then when we look at that same data across the three different years, we again see some either modest gains or some pretty good gains among our different groups when we look across the three years. So again, we're seeing that growth. And then the same thing when we look across programs. This shows that we do have different work to do when we look at our different programming, when we look again at free and reduced lunch, Section 504, the Disabilities Act, our multilingual learners, or L students, as it's listed here, our students receiving IEP support through special education, and then we have that last column that is comparing it to the general education. And again, we do have, we know that we have areas that we need to work on. The green that is shown is the passing rates on that. And then again, if we look at that by looking across the last three years, again, we either see a hold steady or making gains across the different, looking at our demographic groups through programming. When we look at achievement by gender, we see that it is about the same performance level in looking at who's passing. And then again, when we look at the same information, well, it's not the same, it's 2025 versus now, looking at '23 to '25, we see again that where students are making gains, modest gains, across the different, in the last three years. NJSLA Science is another test that the students take in the spring. We, again, it's a grouping of science and engineering practices, looking through investigation, sense-making, and critiquing. This is different than the other assessments, because we only look, only students in grades five, eight, and 11 take the NJSLA Science assessment. The other difference with NJSLA Science is that the proficiency levels are a scale of one to four, rather than one to five. Passing is levels three and four for the Science test. Looking at the achievement levels across the last three years, we see that there is a dip in 11th grade. It just noted that the 11th grade Science test, unlike the NJGPA, is not a graduation requirement, but we also see gains in fifth and eighth grade, and overall, we see a modest gain in performance. The state level of performance hovers at about a 26.7% passing rate, so we are above that when we look at our data. And again, looking at the same set of, same different bands of disaggregated data, first we look at this by race and ethnicity, and we can see that the levels are pretty even on this, with the exception of our Black students and Hispanic students, that we, again, recognize that we have work to do in making sure that all of our students are succeeding. Again, when we look across the different, the last three years, we see, for the most part, some modest gains. We do see a slight dip, but it's not a big dip with our Hispanic students. But again, these are places that we note, and then think about how we can make improvements for all of our students. Looking at it again, by, looking at this by different programming, we can see here, again, the passing is the green. Again, there, you know, there are some questions here around how to support our multilingual learners and our students that are in special education with the results. And then we see some of that reinforced here. We see some gains, but then we also see some places where we have dipped. When we look at the results by gender, they're pretty close. We have 56% of our females passing versus 61% of our male population passing the assessment. And then again, when we look at that over the last three years, we see some pretty, we see some gains, pretty modest in the gains there again, with looking at that, but we still see growth. I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Gould to talk about DLM.
So DLM, or Dynamic Learning Map, is an alternate assessment to NJSLA for students with disabilities who require a different type of assessment. The assessment is adaptive, and questions are presented to students based on their previous response. So there are three components to DLM. There's English Language Arts, Mathematics, as well as Science. And DLM is taken in grades three through 11, and Science is taken in grades five, eight, and 11. Proficiency levels, as reported for DLM, are similar to our Science, with levels three and four being at target or advanced. So here, you can see, both on the left-hand side of the chart, you can see the number of students in our district that have taken the DLM. So at Mathematics, we have 44 students that took the DLM last year, as well as English Language Arts, and then we had 19 students take DLM and Science. And here are the results for those students who took this assessment. take DLM in Science. And here are the results for those students who took this assessment. The next assessment that I'd like to talk about is Access for our Multilingual Learners. So Access is an assessment that's given to all of our students that are multilingual learners, and it is a required assessment that measures students' proficiency in both reading, writing, speaking, and listening. It's mostly administered online. Some of the components, especially in the earlier grades in kindergarten and first grade, need to be administered one-on-one. All English language learners, even those students that have declined services, must sit for Access, and it's taken annually. Teachers use multiple measures in order to ensure that students receive services, as well as to determine the cutoff scores for the Access assessment, to make sure that student, to see whether or not students can exit from programming. So if students score a combined score of four point five, they are eligible to exit from multilingual services or ESL services in the district. And here are their proficiency levels. So it is leveled based off of six levels, with, as I mentioned, four point five being kind of that number that we're looking at as a combined score, in order to determine whether students still receive services or not. I did want to mention, I know Dr. Aderhold had mentioned before when we were speaking about enrollment, and how our multilingual learner enrollment has increased in the district significantly in the last couple of years. And so you can look here, again, this is based on the October fifteenth submission of last year. So we have increased even more since then. But here, here are our numbers. So we had three hundred and twenty-seven students in twenty-twenty-three by October fifteenth. And then last year, as of October fifteenth, we were at four hundred twenty-eight students. So our population of students needing support for multilingual, our multilingual learner students have increased. And here's kind of the breakdown of where students are in terms of our district. And then here you can see their proficiency levels based on their access screening. And now we are going to move on to some of our College Board assessments. We will start with our Advanced Placement Assessment, or our AP Assessment. So College Board and our AP Assessments are used by educational institutions, so colleges, universities, in order to evaluate a student's preparedness for college and to make decisions about admissions, course placement, and the potential of earning college credit. The specific content and skills that are measured vary among the different exams that are taken by students in AP courses, but they are all designed to provide like a standardized and objective way to measure a student's performance. These are our course offerings as a district. So here is a menu kind of of all the different AP courses that we offered last year in our program of studies that were available to students to enroll in, in order to be eligible to also take the assessment. As I mentioned, AP exams are standardized. They are measured on a five-point scale. So with scores of three, four, and five being the scores that qualify, and the scores that you want to earn, that colleges are looking at in order to determine whether a student has met like proficiency in that particular course. On this chart, you can see all the different assessments that were taken, the total number of assessments that were taken by students in our district for both high schools, and also the percentages of their performance, and each of the different subject areas are noted here. So overall, about ninety-four percent of our students score levels three, four, or five in, in our district, with, which is like a significant achievement as a district, that that high level of students are able to earn a three, four, or a five. And some of the courses you can see, or, or some of the subject areas even higher than that. And we had three thousand six hundred thirty-five AP exams administered in district, which is also a significant number. On this chart, you can see the same information, but just in a visual. So you can see performance with the green, blue, and the purple being our threes, fours, and fives. And then on the bottom, you can see the different content areas. The other part that I wanted to share was our enrollment in terms of how students are enrolled. So total percentages at both high school in terms of population in comparison to enrollment. Specifically here, we're looking at our demographic group of race and ethnicity. And then here you can see performance by demographic group, broken down specifically in this particular distribution by achievement levels by demographic group. And as you can see, it's relatively consistent among students of different race and ethnicities in terms of their performance for qualified, well-qualified, and extremely well-qualified. Almost like identical. The same is true for gender. And also for student achievement level by program. You can see that performance in terms of qualified, well-qualified, and extremely qualified. Student performance is relatively similar in those categories. Which is what we want. On this chart, you can see specifically High School North for the last five years, and the percentage of students at High School North that have earned a score of three, four, or five. So for this particular year, twenty-twenty-five, last year, ninety-six percent of students earned a three, four, or five. And you can also see the number of students that took the assessment, as well as how many assessments were administered. And then the same information for High School South. Now we will move on to the ACT, or the American College Test. So the ACT is one of the two major standardized assessments used for college admissions in the United States, the other being the SAT. Many colleges accept both, the ACT and the SAT, and students often choose which one to take based on their preferences of which test they prefer, also based off of the college or university that they're looking at and what they accept. Some students take both. So the way that the ACT is scored, reading and math is scored on a scale of one through thirty-six, and then writing specifically is scored on a scale of two to twelve. And some students just take the math and reading component, and they do not take the writing. So as you will see on the chart that's coming up, you may see more valid numbers in some categories versus the others. So on this chart, you can see, you will notice that our student performance has remained relatively consistent from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two through twenty-four, twenty-five. There isn't great variability in our performance as a district across both math, English, and writing. We're relatively consistent in the ways in which our students perform, which is pretty, they perform pretty strong on the ACTs. Now moving on to the SATs, or the Scholastic Aptitude Test, which is the other assessment that students take for college readiness and entrance, and is accepted by many colleges for admissions. And this is, there are two components, reading and writing, and then there's a mathematics section. Here's our SAT achievement comparison since twenty-nineteen. And as you can see here, we again have remained pretty consistent from year to year. You may notice like slight dips here or there, and then, you know, a slight change in, from one year to the next. You know, it's important to note that variability may happen. There are lots of factors that can influence that. The different test takers that have taken the assessment, the number of students that took the assessment, the change in test content. Sometimes they completely change some of the questions, right, as well as other external factors. But as you look across, we are pretty consistent in terms of our performance and our averages. Here is a comparison of how we do in comparison to New Jersey, as well as total group, ELA total group math, meaning, total group meaning the, anyone who's taken the SATs, period. So nationally, internationally, whoever has taken the SATs. So as you can see, we outperform both New Jersey, as well as anyone who's taken the SATs and their averages. And then this is just a little bit of a fun fact, like what are our students like to do? Do they prefer to take the ACT or the SAT? And as you can see here, overwhelmingly, our students still primarily take the SATs in comparison to the ACTs. Some take both, as I mentioned, but most students still take the SATs. One is not better than the other, it's just a preference. And now I will switch back to Dr. Pearson, who will talk to you about our multi-tiered systems of support, as well as some of our title funds, and how we utilize all of those different components to help to support all of our learners and make growth.
So we're going to talk a little bit about our MTSS process, our Multi-Tierred System of Support. It is a proactive program and model that we use. As a district, we have implemented a number of steps to support students and increase student achievement. MTSS incorporates foundational practices for addressing equity in education through data-based decision-making and evidence-based tiered support to address and prevent academic and behavioral issues. In a multi-tiered system of support, data collection, early intervention, progress monitoring, and early, early identification and early intervention are at the core of supporting individual student growth. MTSS implements universal screeners and secondary screeners in order to identify students for early intervention and targeted support, in order to utilize students', students' strengths to mitigate gaps in learning or skill needs. Two years ago, we piloted a multi-tiered system of support structure in five out of our ten schools. We saw huge progress in the way in which students and teachers were supported and grew. Last year, we had that moved to all ten schools, and now we are in our, in our second year of having all the, all ten schools in a full MTSS program. When we look at the, this is one way to kind of visualize looking at multi-tiered systems of support. We're regarding mostly looking at math and reading at Tier One. We're looking at high-quality instruction, core instruction delivered with fidelity. Tier One is where all students receive high-quality instruction. Teachers receive ongoing professional development to, to support that strong implementation of the curriculum. We have dedicated teacher resource specialists for intervention and instruction. We call them our interventionists, who provide Tier One coaching to teachers, and then they support students in Tier Two and Tier Three. We, and we use, again, a variety of data points through universal screening and secondary screening to be able to determine which students we would move into that proactive Tier Two and Tier Three model. Generally speaking, we use the NWEA MAP Assessment, Growth Assessment, to, to identify as, is our universal screener, and then we use other assessments like Akadiance and some of our internal assessments to make decisions about who needs Tier Two and Tier Three. Tier Two support looks like about two to three times a week of supplemental support based on students' needs, for about twenty to thirty minutes of time. When students move into that Tier Three, it becomes more frequent, which we're looking at then about four to five times a week based on student needs, and again, a duration of twenty to thirty minutes, again, in that supplemental way. When we look at, again, just reinforcing what some of those universal screening processes are, we have in place for our, we use the NWEA MAP at K8. Nine-twelve looks a little different. They look at attendance, behavior, and course performance for that early identification. We progress monitor and use a data decision-based, data decision-making process when we're making decision. The tiered supports are pull-out. It's supplemental, so if you're in, if you're receiving math intervention, you're not missing more math, in order to, you're getting a second dose of math or the second dose of reading. And we're also working on integrating more of our digital content and looking at, we have DreamBox K5. Otis is a data visualization tool. Again, we mentioned MAP and Akadiance and other measures to make sure that we are being as proactive in looking at all of the different ways to meet our learners' needs. Some of the other strategies, having a good, strong core curriculum in place is important. So revisions have been made to ELA, math, and our ML program over the last couple of years. We've had training in Orton-Gillingham, which we mentioned earlier, math recovery training at K5 for our interventionists. We've also had sheltered instruction, observational protocol put into place as well. We've, again, looked at changing the ML program so that we have more push-in opportunities for students at levels three and four, and increased literacy pull-out settings for students in levels one and two through science and social studies content. We've increased and targeted professional development to support teachers directly aligned to strategic goals and main initiatives, especially in the areas of literacy and math. That's the structured, sheltered instruction, observational protocol, or PSYOP, is to support instructional practices for our multilingual learners. We've also leveraged more and more support for students through our title grants. We've used them in a variety of ways. For example, Title II grants paid for the Orton-Gillingham training for our K2 teachers in the foundational reading skills. Title III funds paid for summer camp for our multilingual learners. And we were also able to provide busing at no cost for students. Title IV is helping support students on free and reduced lunch, taking dual enrollment courses at the high school level. And again, with the staffing, we have our teacher resource specialist for CNI, and also interventionists at all levels supporting students and teachers in our tiered supports. And I'm going to turn the last part of this back over to Dr. Gould.
So lastly, I'd like to end this evening's presentation with a little bit of celebration. Not only, you know, we've shared lots of highlights and positive things that we're, we're doing through our testing and our student achievement and our performance, but I want to just highlight some of our additional excellence as a district, because our students and our community and our teachers and educators work really hard to ensure that students have opportunities here to be the best versions of themselves. And so here are just some highlights, like the, this is like a very short snippet of highlights that I wanted to share with you tonight. As I mentioned earlier, you know, WWP students consistently outperformed the state and, and their national peers with SAT averages of six hundred forty-seven in both reading and writing, and six sixty-one in math, with ACT composite scores of twenty-nine point one, which is just remarkable. In twenty-twenty-four, this actually should say ninety-four percent, so we will change that, but AP exam scores of three or higher, and twenty-four percent of our seniors are National Merit Recognition, which is a really big deal and a really large number. In twenty-eighteen through twenty-twenty-four, six hundred sixty-four WWP students graduated with the seal of illiteracy, and that number is just going to continue to increase. is just going to continue to increase, especially with our dual immersion program, slowly and surely getting into the high school with our cohort now being in seventh grade. Additionally, 97% of our high school students graduate in four years, with 100% of our students graduating last year. So every single student graduated and met graduation proficiency through one path or another. Over 96% of those graduates pursue higher education, 93% of them enrolling in a four-year college or university. We have a number of our students attending and participating in Mercer Community Technical Schools and also Middlesex Technical Schools, enabling them to tailor their experiences to their areas of strength and to their areas of interest as well in pursuing those opportunities for themselves. 21% of our high school students are enrolled in some level of music course at the high school. 20% are enrolled in a visual arts course. We also received in 2024, WWP was named the NAMM Foundation Best Communities for Music Education for the 11th year in a row, which is also a big recognition. 24% of our students at the high school level are taking a course in computer science. Also remarkable. Most, most high schools don't have that many instructors in computer science to be able to offer that many courses to students. Our robotics team is internationally ranked and has gone to the world championship 12 years in a row. And our culinary arts program has just expanded tremendously with an increase in enrollment at the high school level by 41%, which is remarkable. So we're very excited to be able to offer all of these different opportunities for our students and, and different opportunities that pursue different pathways as well, based on student strengths and interests. And so I wanted to just thank you all for your time this evening. I know this is a long presentation, but as we look to the future, you know, in WWP, like we're reminded of all of the work that we continue to do, which is centered around our mission and our strategic goals. And we want to live that out every day. And we're always looking and reflecting and thinking about not only our data, but the students that are in front of us and how can we continue to be better for, for them so that we could really offer them every opportunity to be successful. So thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I'm going to open it up to the board for any questions. Dana?
I have a bunch of questions, but I think many of them are answered, as you say, live. But the, initially, what was the, the October 15 submission that's on here? Is that 2324 or 2425?
It's the 2425.
Okay. And then I think you answered this one, but the 7.3% who did not make the score for to be graduation-ready, you said that everyone was able to graduate, so they went through the other, the other processes.
Correct. So they had the opportunity to be reassessed and/or they met the requirement through either Accuplacer, SAT, or one of the other pathways.
Okay. And then just jumping to multilingual, you know, as you've mentioned, it's increasing a lot from year to year. What percent graduate from the program each year? Like, I know it's not consistent because it's not the same cohort, but...
When you say graduate, could you clarify?
I mean, they move into, they move into general education.
So they're all in general education?
Right, but they don't have the support of ML.
Oh, in terms of going into not receiving supports for, for multilingual learners? That depends on the year. I would say around, we looked at this last year, it was around 21% of our students were able to meet that proficiency of 4.5 and no longer need services. It's very dependent upon what, how much prior language proficiency they have, what levels of support they've had, whether they're, you know, coming in as a level one student, meaning they have no language proficiency, or they're coming in with some language proficiency. So it's really individually dependent. But last year, about 21% of our students were able to have enough proficiency to no longer need services.
Okay. And then jumping to AP tests?
Sure.
So it looks like there were 3,635 tests given. Did you, does it say in there, you know, how many students that was that took that number of tests? I don't know, maybe it had it in there. And then, just as an observation, it seemed like more males were taking AP tests by kind of significant, you know, like 1975 versus 1639.
So we had 1,394 students take the AP.
1,334, okay.
Across both high schools.
Right. So it's of course, across many grades because, yeah.
Primarily juniors and seniors.
Seniors, right.
We do have one AP course now that's offered to sophomores, so we do have some sophomores who take it, as well as we have some sophomores who take an AP test in their language as well. So sometimes we have that.
Okay. I don't know, I just said something about noticing that more males are taking APs. It looks kind of, I don't know.
I'm not sure why.
Yeah, 1975 versus 1639, it seems like, oh, kind of a lot. And then I just also, another observation was just that the ACT participation seemed to be, it was already low, but it seems to be dropping over the neck, over the last, you know, two to three years, so. So anyway, thank you so much for your report. Appreciate all that.
Any more questions?
Wow, what a comprehensive report. I would have loved to take a deeper dive. Slide 26. It appears that every cohort had a dip in 2024, but then a recovery in 2025, all but special education, which has continued to decline. What's your feelings on that? Have we had increased enrollment of kids that might be more greatly impacted? But what are your thoughts?
That's a complex question. We certainly are always looking at our programming across. One of the things that we've started to focus on more recently is how we can really communicate across general education and special education in terms of our programming and ensure like alignment with our MTSS process with our special education as well, as we transition students from, you know, special education programming back into general education so that they're more successful. So that's something that we started to look at and alignment of that programming. I'm not sure if it's because students have more need. I think that we have to continue to look at, you know, what, we have to dissect this further in terms of like, is it specific grade level cohorts? Is it specific needs of individual students? You know, are there particular curricular aspects where we need to do more training with teachers in terms of supporting them in helping students make more progress or accessing the grade level standards differently? So we definitely need to dive into that further.
And just one more, thank you for that answer. You mentioned the alternate routes to graduation a couple of times, where you heard Accuplacer. Can you just tell us what that is?
So Accuplacer, I think one of the reasons why we've had such success with it is because it offers like almost immediate feedback to students on where they need to improve. So for instance, they submit like their writing, and then it offers them feedback of why they were or were not like successful. And then they can practice, there are a lot of like practice sessions that they could do immediately in order to improve for the future. And so we have utilized it for that purpose. It also supports our ML students because they can take components of it in the language that they're most comfortable in. And so, for instance, the mathematics component specifically can be adjusted for a different language, and therefore it gives access while still measuring the skills in terms of graduation readiness. And so that has been very helpful as well. So I think because of the immediate feedback, the ability to do like tutorials to help them make progress, as well as access for students like our multilingual learners, has really helped us to have success with students that maybe, NJGPA, they're not as successful with.
Thank you. And thank you both for the presentation.
Sure.
Any other questions? Luisa?
Can you just remind us, when do the students take the NJSLAs? Because we're judging them as meeting, meeting grade relative or not, so I think when they take them is relevant.
GPA takes place, that's the graduation requirement, when that takes place in March. And then NJSLA takes place in May, April, May. We have field testing happening right now for the new NJSLA adaptive test that's happening now, and then that'll be administered in the spring, March, and May as well.
Okay, so the students that are approaching grade level still realistically have a shot of making grade level by the end of that grade level, right? But the ones that are far off are obviously far off. Okay, great.
And that's something that most recently, especially recently, we've really been looking at that cohort of students that are approaching and comparing that to some of our internal measures, where we look at our MAP assessments and looking at what specific skills can we help to, you know, really facilitate in the classroom and teaching teachers how to also look at those assessments and be able to identify those skills so that we can really target that more intentionally and focus on that so that we can prepare them to be ready for the following year.
And also GPA, the NJGPA, the kids that take that in March, they have the opportunity to retake in October if they did not pass. And then any new seniors that were not here and had not taken it also have that opportunity, and that was in earlier in October.
It will be interesting with the new assessment, how we will think about historical data in comparison to how students perform next year, because we really will not have a comparison to what the adaptive test or assessment will tell us about our students. So we really will also rely a lot on our internal measures to ensure that students are growing.
Shweta?
Thank you both for the presentation. I was just wondering if you could share, in addition to these annual tests, how is a district measuring progress throughout the year and using data throughout the year to, you know, address curriculum?
You can start, go ahead.
Yep. How are we not?
Yeah, yeah. So there's lots of levels to what's happening with assessments. So we use the NWEA MAP, we give that three times a year. So we just are wrapping up that administration now of that for both ELA and math at K8. And then we also, for mathematics at K5, we have our unit assessments and we have a unit assessment and also number corner, which is a component of our foundational resource bridges. We give that five times a year to students so that there's checkpoints along the way around major content. In ELA at K5, there was also with the IMSA training, there are instances throughout the year where students are, actually, there's weekly assessments with that. And teachers are taking anecdotal information daily, so you get more of that observational piece to go along with some of these bigger measures that we have. Do you want to speak about secondary?
At the secondary level, besides students' grades, many of the different departments are also incorporating common assessments. And teachers have half-day or full-day release days where they come together and they take a look at the common assessments and make comparisons in terms of student achievement, and then set goals for like the, then the next administration of those common assessments. As well as, we look at other standardized measures like PSATs, you know, we look at SATs, APs, like every single possible assessment that we can think of to see how students are making progress. We talked a lot about assessments in terms of their academics, but I also want to mention that we have ways to make sure that we're providing supports for students, and this was mentioned earlier when Ms. Sinkotta gave her presentation, that we're also supporting students in a tiered way through their SEL as well. You know, both at the tier one level, which she spoke about, our different programs through a second step, you know, through our counseling services, as well as tier two and tier three through our small group instruction with our counselors and our UBC clinicians at a one-to-one level with students. Like, there are lots of tiered supports for SEL too. We didn't talk about that in our presentation because it wasn't as relevant, and she mentioned a lot of those supports. But I want to make sure that our, you know, it's shared that our MTSS encompasses both SEL supports and behavioral supports, as well as academic supports.
Thank you. Liz?
Thank you again for your very super comprehensive report, especially so late in the day. I'm just so appreciate what you just, the comments you just made about the overall support systems that we have in place. I just wanted to know, how do we let parents know about the availability of those type of additional support systems, especially as kids are preparing to take the SATs and all those underkind and standardized tests? What's the approach taken for students as well as parents? And then I have a second question.
Sure. So Oliver, and this is actually something that was also referenced in some of those publications, that there isn't a transparency. Our parents have access to all of the assessment data is available to them. We have parent reports that are sent home for every assessment that we administer as a district, as well as if we identify that there's a specific need through our universal screening, whether it's at the secondary level where we're looking at academics, behavior, or attendance. And students are receiving a tier two support because of one of those reasons, we are reaching out to parents and they are part of that process and that conversation. As well as if we, we determine that a student needs intervention, K8, parents are also notified that their child is receiving intervention, they meet with the interventionist, they're given progress monitoring, they know exactly how their kid is doing, what the goal is for their particular child, what the need is, and how they're making progress towards that goal. It's measured, honestly, their progress is measured every other week or every week, depending on the frequency in which the interventionist sees the student. And everything is shared. All of our assessment is also shared in Genesis under the assessment tab, so parents have access to it there as well. So there is lots of information that's shared from the district to parents as, as it pertains to assessments and what's administered and the results, as quickly as we can.
And then in terms of, in terms of supports, I meant more like financial support?
Oh, sure.
For like, because in this community where a lot of people have access to tutoring and all these different types of courses, and not everyone may be?
Yeah, so through title funding, we also, many of the schools have Title I tutoring or tutorial tutoring. So as students are identified for additional supports, they have tutoring available after school, both at the middle schools, but some of the elementary schools do as well. Students qualify though, based on need. And so if there is a particular need, the counselors or the administration will reach out to a parent and let them know. And then tutoring is available through our teachers, and it's free of cost, and parents are notified that their child is eligible. But we do have to ensure that, you know, it's based off of need, so we do take our students that have the highest need first, and then we provide services for them and notify parents accordingly.
Sure. Thank you, thank you, Doc. Oh. Lloy.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Just a comment, actually, to begin.
Sure.
I'm so thankful that you guys highlighted the, on slide 20, oh, excuse me, I can't read the numbers too. Slide 19 and 32, highlighting the grade three, I guess, in 2023, as they take the NJSLA, ELA, and math each year. And just the progress with that group, just a reminder that that's the group that's, because many of us have asked about this, that there were kindergartners when COVID hit. So when these exams came out and we looked at the numbers, we were like, ooh, that's a little, but just watching that cohort grow, really, in both ELA and math. I mean, I think it's a credit to parents, the district, and everyone, you know, putting in an all-out effort to, to help those students.
I believe it's also the cohort that's been called out in the publication. So it just shows how that cohort has grown over time from third grade through fifth grade.
So really, I love seeing that. I just, I know with our race and ethnicity, looking at those graphs, and I know it's like five to... like five to, five or six percent with our Black and Hispanic students, and I appreciate the slide with showing year-to-year the steady growth, is, I guess my question is, to continue that growth and maybe a little bit, maybe not quicker, but just to help those students get to kind of the same picture graphs as our other cohorts, would, I know there's a lot of work going on, I just, I wonder if you could just talk more about like how we can help those students specifically?
Okay. So we do a lot of that work through our MTSS process, right? So both with our interventionists and the training that we provide to them, that's targeted through specific instruction, but also our beliefs around, you know, high expectations for all learners to make progress, and how we set specific goals for individual kids, right? So looking at where is a student in terms of their needs, and where are their skills, and then how do we set a goal for accelerating that, especially if their skills need more growth, and, you know, how do we help to support them individually? And we have been working really specifically and very hard to do that, and then to progress monitor to make sure we have the right program, the right instructor sometimes, right? The right frequency, so if the frequency is not working or needs to be more or needs to be accelerated, we need to make an adjustment with that. So we monitor all of those things, and if kids are not making what we deem adequate growth in a certain amount of time, then something needs to change, whether it be the program that we're using, or whether it be, you know, the frequency, or whether it be, you know, maybe it needs to be a different individual that needs to administer the intervention. So we're constantly looking at that, and we really do try to focus it on individual students, because we want to partner the intervention with the student and what they need.
Thank you so much. And just a curious question, I know the NJSLA 1, 2, 3 is not meeting expectations, or at least 3 is approaching expectations, and 4, 5 is passing, and I'm just curious, when, when students qualify for multi-tiered support, is it like a benchmark 3 and 1, 1, 2, 3, or do you look at the NJSLA along with the internal data with MAP testing? Like, how do you kind of make that determination of?
Do you want to talk about that, or I can? Yeah, I'll start, and then you can fill in. Okay. So we use the NWEA MAP as the foundation for that universal screening, so everybody takes that, and then we look at students that fall in the 40th percentile and below on MAP, and look at from there, what's other, some secondary screeners we could look at. So Acadians is a secondary screener that we give, that's also a universal screener, but that gives us some more information about whether or not students, the way that the scoring comes out from that is whether or not students should be successful with the grade level content. So when we do the universal screening, we look for two pieces of confirming data to say, yes, there should be an intervention or not, and sometimes we look at the NJSLA, if it's, we don't, but we only have that information for third grade and above, we don't have that for K1, 2. So we don't necessarily use that as that benchmark, we want something that everybody takes, that's why we use the NWEA MAP first. And then for mathematics at K5, we look at the MAP, and then we look, we, then we screen if kids are 40th percentile and below, we look at the Acadian screener, and then we look at, at the number corner benchmark or baseline and check up from there, because that gives us some classroom data. So we want, we don't want to overtest kids, but we also want to make sure that, and we're also using things that kids are already doing in making those determinations, and we don't want any of, any of these decisions to be based on, on one data point. That's where we come in with, you know, look at MAP, and then do we have another piece of confirming data to say yes or no on whether or not that intervention should take place?
It's hard to use NJSLA because we don't get the assessment back for a very long time, and it's only once a year, right? And so it's helpful to look at it for patterns in terms of like our curriculum, like, for instance, we, we noticed when we went back and we looked at one of the grade levels, and I can't remember which one, but one of the grade levels, we noticed that many of the students were not proficient on one of the particular skills, I think it was like putting fractions on a number bar, it was third grade. Okay, so we, it's helpful for us for that particular thing, right? To look at, okay, we need to incorporate more practice with that, we have it in our curriculum, but obviously they don't have enough practice with it. So it helps us to adjust like curricular things, but for individual student decisions, it's not timely, it doesn't give us like on-time information. That's why MAP administration, three times a year, gives us more, what's happening with students more like right now, as well as the Acadians assessment, as well as other benchmark assessments through math and through literacy, so that we can have a more, we have more, we're able to set more SMART goals, more goals that are on target for those particular kids, and to check to make sure that they truly need intervention, and then what's their goal.
And just one last comment, because I had a son who went through, who just graduated last year, K through 12 through the district, and I'm not surprised with the SAT and AP, AP scores, because I saw the materials that just, well, as much as he would share when he came home, with the, the work that the teachers do in the classroom, especially for the AP classes, it's amazing the, what, what they get through in a year. And so I'm not really surprised with some of the scores and the SAT testing. And just as a credit, I mean, every parent I've talked to who has had a kid that's gone through the district, and they're in college, they are, whatever stage is next, they always say the district really prepared them, that's a really common, oh, they're really, really prepared. I actually had a friend tell me, maybe the district prepared him a little too well, because he's a little bit too much free time in college, because, so I was like, okay, but, I mean, just kudos to, you know, the staff and, and the administration for, for getting them to that point, and, you know, kicking them off as they start their next stage in life, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gould and Dr. Pearson for the report. I know during our committee meeting, we had a very robust discussion as well when we previewed this testing report, so thank you for answering a lot of my questions then, and the rest of the committee's questions as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now we move on to the first opportunity for public comment. The board invites thoughts and reactions on agenda items and items of concern from members of our community who are present. Each participant is asked to give his or her name and address prior to making a statement, which will be limited to three minutes in accordance with the Board Policy 0167. All statements shall be directed to presiding officer. This public comment period shall be limited to 60 minutes.
Thank you. Neil Lewis, Plainsboro Township Committee. I, first of all, would like to say thank you very much for a very informative and impressive detailed report of the accomplishments and also the challenges that the district faces, but the, the great accomplishments and the record of detail is, is very impressive. I'd like to thank the district particularly for its attention being paid to the nutritional challenges that are being faced as a result of the very bizarre and inattentive effects of what's going on in, in the federal system right now. I'd also like to congratulate everyone on the progress being made in the energy, energy progress that's happening right now with your efficiency of the system. Thank you for the hot tea, by the way, the efficiency is, also assist with that very much. But I would like to make a general statement, Plainsboro Township takes a great deal of pride in celebrating the accomplishments of leaders within our community, and in particular, we, we'd like to at least acknowledge the people who exemplify excellence in service education and civic engagement, and on behalf of the Township Committee, we would specifically like to congratulate Dr. Aderhold on his being the recipient of the Ernest Boyer Outstanding Educator Award for New Jersey, and I share that from all of my colleagues on the Township Committee. So thank you very much, and thank you for all you're doing.
Okay, hi, everyone, and again, Dr. Aderhold, congratulations. My name is Ashley Rechtinwald from West Windsor. We've been speaking via email. So good evening, I know it's getting late, so I'll keep this brief. Again, my name is Ashley Rechtinwald, I am a mom of three children in this district, each on a different bus, which means three separate stops at my home. Every week on Village Road West, we witness stop-arm violations, where drivers are illegally passing stopped school buses as children are getting on and off. These daily incidences are why we launched the West Windsor Plainsboro School Bus Safety Initiative, now supported by nearly 100 parents across our community. Our mission is simple, to make sure no child safety depends on driver luck or community vigilance alone. In just a few short weeks, we've seen incredible momentum. Our mayor and police department have introduced an adopt-a-bus program to increase enforcement, and we've begun working with the West Windsor Bicycle and Pedestrian Alliance, the Allen Voorhees Transportation Center at Rutgers, and the New Jersey Bike and Walk Coalition, all eager to support local action on school bus safety. I have also been in communication with Dr. Aderhold, who has been very supportive of our efforts thus far. I understand that legislation is critical to long-term change, and we are actively communicating with our state legislators, including State Senator Shirley Turner, who has personally expressed her support for Bill 2624, which would allow cameras on school buses to ticket drivers who illegally pass stopped buses. Finally, I spoke directly with Dr. Masimino, Superintendent of Woodbridge, whose district implemented Bus Patrol, a free safety program that identified nearly 3,000 violations last year. He called it a home run, citing strong privacy protections and valuable data to inform prevention and policy. Our hope is to work hand-in-hand with this board and the district to bring similar safeguards to West Windsor Plainsboro. The violations are happening every day right in front of our children. Together, we can move from reactive enforcement to proactive protection. We ask, we are asking to consider this education flyer that I have here to be posted where adults and parents entering the school, as well as with the school's weekly newsletter, so that we can better educate our parents and school staff in general. I'm happy to share this digitally, or I can share this right now. So thank you for your time and continued commitment to student safety.
Thank you. Any more for public comment? Well, that closes the first opportunity for public comment. We will now move on to the Board of Education Committee reports. Administration and Facilities Committee, report first with Dana.
Okay. Good evening, it's pretty late now. The Administration and Facilities Committee met on October 13th. First, the committee heard highlights provided by the athletic directors from both high schools. Sports are nearing the end of the fall season, and several teams have hosted charity games, including the Surf Up Hope Game, which is a charity game between North and South girls' volleyball teams, which raised over $1,200, and the Red Card Soccer Game between North and South, South raised over $1,500 for the American Cancer Society. The committee reviewed the district's self-evaluation and responses in the District Performance Review, which is the DPR, a required component of, of CUSAC process. While the discussion encompassed all areas, the committee focused its review on operations and governance. The committee recommends approval of the state of assurance submission of the DPR to the County Superintendent's Office. Next, the committee was joined by Dr. Jessica Smedley, Director of Counseling. Dr. Smedley provided an overview of the counseling services provided by the district, including some of our new initiatives within the district, such as Second Step and Wayfinder, which we heard about tonight, and our partnership with Rutgers Behavioral Healthcare, and our collaboration with outside and community agencies to provide support to students and families. The committee will next meet on November 11th.
Thank you, Dana. Next, the Curriculum Committee. Lloy?
Thank you, Pooja. The Curriculum Committee met on October 16th. We began with Dr. Gould, who reviewed the annual testing report, which was just presented to the board this evening, and she received feedback from the committee on the presentation. Then Dr. Gould shared the NJCUSAC indicators for instruction and program with the committee as part of the NJCUSAC process. On the agenda to, for voting tonight, we have, first up, the Curriculum Committee recommends for a tuition agreement, an agreement with Mercer County Technical School District for placement of students as needed in the alternative high school program at the Rabino Academy for, Thomas J. Rabino, excuse me, Academy for the, this school year at a cost not to exceed $1,950 per month per student. Next, the committee recommends approval of the listing of community education, fall, winter 2025, and spring 2026, adult, youth, and after-school educate, enrichment programs, excuse me, listed on, which are all listed on the agenda. And then lastly, field trips. The Curriculum Committee recommends the following overnight field trips for approval. First with High School South, the Science Olympiad Team to Cornell University from November 14th through the 15th. The cost of that trip is approximately $350 per student. And then moving on to High School North, Model United Nations to Princeton Model United Nations Conference Ivy, Conference Ivy League, excuse me, Experience in Parsippany from November 20th through the 23rd. The cost of this trip is approximately $370. And then last but not least, new, our music students for North to New Orleans from the 26th, 26th of March to the 31st, and the cost of that trip is about 2,500 per student. The committee will next meet on Tuesday, November 11th. Thank you.
Thank you, Lloy. And next we'll have the Finance Committee report. Louisa?
Thanks. The Finance Committee met on October 13th. The committee reviewed the financial reports for the month. The administration certified that no expense lines are over-expended, and that there are sufficient funds to complete the year. The percentage of the budget spent is tracking very similarly to prior years. There are motions on tonight's agenda to approve the following: Health and Safety Evaluation of School Buildings Checklist Statement of Assurance; Renewal of Brown &amp; Brown as the district's healthcare broker of record; Renewal of Benicard Services as the district's Prescription Drug Benefits Administrator; Renewal of Aetna as the district's dental service administrator; and to authorize the business administrator to use competitive contracting to procure community education enrichment programs for the 25, 26 school year. For construction updates, the administration shared that they are still getting pricing for some additional lighting for the North Auditorium using the funding allowance from the Electrical Panel Upgrade Project. For the Energy Savings Improvement Programming Project, the programming of the controls for the HAWK HFIF project continues. Delivery of the rooftop units for GMS is expected any day. These units were delayed from their expected delivery date in the first week of September. Regarding the 24, 25 audit, staff reported that the audit continues, with the auditors and administration discussing closing and opening entries to accounts. As to the budget, staff reviewed the budget calendar. The preliminary budget calendar was shared with the committee, more dates will be added as meetings occur to develop the budget. For the Annual Health and Safety Evaluation Checklists, the administration has completed the forms for each building, and they will be submitted to the County Office of Education. A sample was reviewed with the committee. The M1 and CMP Comprehensive Maintenance Plan have been completed and will be submitted to the County Office of Education for review. The administration provided a copy of the documents. For the New Jersey Single Quality Accountability Continuum, the administration shared the district's performance review checklist with the committee members. I know our committee sounds so exciting, doesn't it? Okay. For cafeteria, the administration shared that the number of breakfasts and lunches increased year-over-year for the month of September, with the two comparative months having the same number of serving days. The number of breakfasts served increased by 609 for the month, and the number of lunches increased by 2,649. The number of lunches served to students that qualified for free reduced New Jersey Income Eligible increased by 24% year-over-year. Average daily lunch participation increased by 197 lunches per day, or 10%. In the six elementary schools, the number of breakfasts served per day increased by 10, and 70% of the students receiving breakfast are eligible for free reduced to a New Jersey Income Eligible. Lunch will be served during half-days at HAWK this week as part of a pilot program for serving lunch on half-days. These will be bagged lunches, expected to be eaten in class prior to leaving the building. If it is successful, this may become a normal practice. SFE, our food service vendor, is at full staff. Amazing. Under transportation, administration shared information regarding the submission of a grant for six electric 54-passenger school buses with the help of Highland Fleets, Inc. Once the district is notified of the results of the grant application, a feasibility study will be provided to determine the financial efficacy of accepting the buses. Highland Fleets offers national buying power of the buses, a maintenance and service contract, including towing, including towing, installation of the chargers, and the cost of the electricity to charge the buses throughout the year. The cost of these services must prove to be feasible. The cost of these services must prove to be feasible for us to continue with the process of accepting the grant to procure the buses. In other business, the administration shared the latest hourly rate chart, showing the increase in minimum wage to $15.92 per hour. This increases for the few hourly positions that are not covered under a negotiated agreement salary guide. The administration shared that the band boosters want to purchase a shed for the High School North campus to store marching band equipment. The administration shared that we'll have a meeting with an entity on Wednesday to discuss a possible grant to install outdoor gym workout stations at each of the high schools. These will be primarily funded by outdoor corporate, outside corporate sponsors. The committee will next meet on Tuesday, November 11th.
Thank you, Louisa. We'll now move on to the voting portion of our meeting. Can I get a motion for Administration Items 1 through 8, and the purple addendum? Liz and Lloy.
Man, I haven't spoken in so long.
You're out of practice.
You told you to take a break.
Oh, my gosh, here we go, all right. Okay, we'll, we'll start, we'll start with Ms. Chiniera.
Yes.
Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Ms. Krug.
Yes.
Ms. Ho.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Shetty.
Yes.
Ms. Bonsel.
Yes.
Can I get a motion for Curriculum Items 1 through 3? Dana and Paul.
Okay, we'll start, we'll start with Ms. Krug.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Ms. Shetty.
Yes.
Ms. Chiniera.
Yes.
Ms. Ho.
Yes.
Ms. Bonsel.
Yes.
Can I get a motion for Finance Items 1 through 12? Schwetha and Louisa.
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Shetty.
Yes.
Ms. Ho.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Chiniera.
Yes.
Ms. Krug.
Yes.
Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Ms. Bonsel.
Yes.
Can I get a motion for Personnel Items 1 to, 1 and 2, and the green addendum?
Also, just want to point out that you have a hourly rate chart that was, it's a slight revision from what you had in the pony, so just so you know, that's what you're voting on, is the, the one that's on the table. There was a little format change.
Thank you. So, the motion, Dana and Lloy.
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Krug.
Yes.
Ms. Maliga.
Yes.
Ms. Chiniera.
Yes.
Ms. Ho.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Shetty.
Yes.
Ms. Bonsel.
Yes.
Now, we'll move on to the approval of our Board of Admins. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from October 7? Paul and Dana. All those in favor, say aye.
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 And, do we have any Board of Liaison reports? Board Liaison Reports. Liz.
Just real quickly, that Lloy and I have been communicating with the different PTSA's and working with them and participating, keeping an eye on some of the concerns and things that have been raised or vetted to us, so that's really helpful for us with our partnership with the administration. I also just want to make a comment with regard to the A&amp;F Committee Minutes, and just a very deep appreciation to Ms. Senkata and Dr. Smedley for their extensive time and effort with explaining all the range of counseling services and the robust programs that we have here in, within the district, and looking forward to more outreach with the parents in the community to make everyone more aware of what's already available, and how to go about to access important services needed.
Any other liaison reports? Any new business? Now, it brings us to the second opportunity for public comment. The Board invites comments from members of our community who are present. Each participant is asked to give his or her name and address prior to making a statement, which will be limited to three minutes in accordance with Board Policy 0167. All statements shall be directed to the Presiding Officer. This public comment period shall be limited to 15 minutes. Do we have any more public comment? Seeing none, I'm closing the opportunity for public comment, and I think we are going to adjourn the meeting now. Thank you, everyone, and have a wonderful Halloween for those who are...
Vote.
Oh. Do I have to make a motion to adjourn? Oh, a motion to adjourn, okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting? Liz and Louisa.
And then, do I?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it?
And, no.
Thank God.
That adjourns our meeting.